Oh. Traffic was awful. Okay, I'm calling the workshop meeting to order at 6:01. And we're having the discussion first. I didn't see the formal agenda.
Yes, the discussions are up first.
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell approached me some time ago.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we're gonna do the, alright.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll do that after. I was gonna say.
That's after.
I'd like to do that. Okay. Um, this is a workshop where the intent is to generate questions. We're not getting answers. But we get those in the, in the public hearing, which is scheduled for April something.
April 9th.
April 9th. Um, but most of the commissioners are not Land use lawyers. And hearing about what you're proposing to do helps the members of the commission to be able to figure out the questions that they want to ask. And I will tell you some questions I am going to ask and so that you're prepared for hopefully most of the questions. They won't be, you know, coming out of the air. Uh, we have found that it's a better, better thing for both sides that there's communication going back and forth. So, any of the commissioners here will be saying, "I'm gonna ask you a question about such and such." And with that.
But we don't, we don't provide.
No, we're not providing, no. That has to be done in the public hearing. This is to just, uh, kind of understand and it'll allow the commissioners to review your paperwork in, with a better understanding in general of what's going on.
Okay.
And they still may come up with some more questions, but the goal is to make this as much of a to and from proposal.
Sure. And did you have anything that you could project on the screens or just in the packet? Uh, Ronnie could pull up the.
You don't have anything?
Uh, we can pull up what the application materials are. I have them in a file.
Well, like, you know, some maps and things like that. Oh, we have to talk, oh, we have to. I didn't realize that, that that has to be done by the council. So, okay, well, we can talk about the annexation first.
Okay.
But that's the public hearing.
Back to back, separate hearings?
Separate hearings, back to back, in the same meetings, and then it will be a recommendation that'll be brought to the city council.
So, I'll just give you a really high level review of the applications. Um, so I'm Steve Kay, Cascade Plan. I'm representing the applicant. And, um, I'm based in the Subaltern area, but I work throughout the valley. Um, and this is an annexation application. It involves four parcels. Um, it's just west of Beef Bend Road and 137th Avenue intersection, but it's not adjacent to the intersection. Uh, it totals 7.16 acres. And when you're looking at the master plan for the Kingston Terrace area, it's located in the Beef Bend neighborhood. So, we, as you know, we submitted a, an annexation application, and we also have a subdivision and development plan review application. Um, and that is proposing eighty-seven townhome units. And they're grouped in structures with two to four units. And the Beef Bend neighborhood requires a minimum of eighteen dwelling units per acre, or net acre. So, after you take out the roads and the stormwater facilities and those things. And we're going to go with twenty-one. Uh, we also submitted our potential plans. Access to, that demonstrates that the, the single-family attached dwellings. We aren't able to directly access Beef Bend Road because of the classification of that roadway. So, we have consolidated access from 137th Avenue. And we're proposing frontage improvements at roadway to meet the collector's street standards. City has, um, frontage improvements also proposed on Beef Bend Road that will meet finer arterial standards. At the, the, there's, um, higher to create a west neighborhood route through this area. So, we're proposing to establish that along the south boundary of the, so east to west.
You're gonna have to explain that one.
Extending from, extending from, uh, 137th Avenue. There needs to be a neighborhood route which provides access to the Beef Bend neighborhood. Um, and prevents, you know, multiple access or too many access points on Beef Bend Road. So, the idea is to lead most of that neighborhood through a, kind of a collector's street for the neighborhood. And that would be running along the south boundary of our site where we're looking. All traffic from our site will take access to our site, all homes, off from 137th, none from Beef Bend Road. And that road will, will be stubbed to the west boundary of the property, of, of the four properties, so that it can be extended as future development occurs to the west.
You have a map, um, that shows, A, where the buildings are gonna be and the roads. That would be useful and have a fairly, um, you know, a good map about, a discussion about that when you do the hearing.
Um, and then within the site, there's development of new local roads that you could see there. And we have one of them in that kind of a northeast corner that's stubbed to the two properties that are at the intersection of Beef Bend Road and 137th. So, that, again. And then stormwater, um, the low point of the site is, is kind of in that southeast corner. So, we have a detention pond in that location. So, that's, that's kind of a high-level overview. Um, I'm sure you have questions. Um, but I, the applicant also has just some additional information.
Yeah, I'd just like to do a quick introduction and jump into this. So, I'm Cody Johnnycheck. I represent Ken Randall Homes, the applicant. Um, and then also, we represent for current property owners that we have a contract with that purchased their land. If the city says that they were able to build homes there and develop the property. Um, the, so as part of our application process, as you guys are aware, we do have to do a community meeting. We've done a, um, in addition, we've also taken that opportunity to, any property owner that we board or have a common property line with, we just met with privately and discussed with them. Um, since they have the greatest impact of our development, you know, what, what, what they can expect, when they can expect it, and what might occur, and what mitigations we can do to help minimize our impact, you know, on their address neighbors. So, that's kind of our community, um, meeting process. Um, and through that process, um, the, uh, through the community meeting process, um, it was a great process. We had a lot of positive conversations with the different community members. Needless to say, uh, being the first project in the, um, that this part of the area, the Kingston Terrace Plan area, the Rivermead area, there's a lot of anxiety and worries and like questions about how things were gonna happen. So, also, the meetings were really helpful to discuss that with the people there. Um, the, and they were all normal questions and concerns. They were the same questions and concerns we would have if this was happening in our neighborhood. Um, and, you know, people mostly saw and make sure that their questions or things they weren't sure about would be addressed and stuff. So, hopefully, we had positive conversations, and we were able to address that stuff. Um, a lot of common questions, so, stuff that, um, Steve already talked about, like the number of units, eighty-seven units, um, which seems like a lot. Um, you know, the site could hold, there's apartments right across the road from it. Um, it could hold an apartment development and have two to three times, um, the number of units, um, that we're proposing. Went over that with them. Um, the site layout and access.
Excuse me, where is the apartment complex?
Um, so directly across the road on 137th and Beef Bend, um, there's an apartment complex.
Okay.
Right, Collier?
Those are, those are not rentals.
Or it's over on Peachtree, maybe?
Yeah.
On Peachtree, so it's Collier.
Oh, yeah.
And Beef Bend, there's an apartment complex, which is, is drafted from, because we're down, we don't have the corner lots, so dropping down the street that's across is that. Um, but the name's not, it's missing here right now. Um, so, and some things, Steve, we went over like the site access, questions you already brought up are similar to, the community had. Um, you know, why don't we have a road going to Beef Bend? Why are we taking all of our access off of 137th? So, we worked through that, um, helped explain why the county, the county, that the county doesn't want additional access points off of Beef Bend. It creates traffic dangers and conflicts. So, they tried to minimize that because of cars are driving forty-five on that road. They're trying to minimize the flow through a slower, uh, road, slower traffic road like 137th. Um, the, uh, we were discussing like that. And of course, building size and height. Um, we showed a proposed building plan, the height, we have all two-story buildings. So, that was particularly appreciated of some of our immediate neighbors, um, to the south and west. Um, and then always parking, um, which we have quite a bit of parking. We have garage parking. We have driveway parking. We have on-street parking. So, um, those are some of the topics that we discussed and went over. Um, and the top two concerns that we heard at the meeting, we spent quite a bit of time discussing over the two meetings, was, um, traffic and stormwater management. Stormwater management was, was, was different. I never had that much concern about it or, um, I assumed the proximity to the Colleton River and stuff. People wanted to know how it was gonna be treated and stuff, so. Um, and then traffic specifically, um, people had a lot of concern about the traffic intersection at 137th and Beef Bend Road. Um, the, uh, so, in those conversations, we just went over with the community what, um, what we're required to do and what we did as our, for our land use application and annexation application. Um, yeah, we have to do a TIA, a transportation impact analysis. So, what our project, our eighty-seven units, how it's gonna affect the surrounding streets. Um, and essentially analyze what issues or what challenges to be caused by that. So, for example, the TIA would analyze visibility, road design, pedestrian safety, hazard mitigation, which to you and me, that means stop signs, speed bumps, piping. Um, the, uh, and then to make sure our, that we meet county and city standards as far as, um, road designs and, um, the amount of traffic at an intersection. Um, so the intersection at 137th and Beef Bend Road, um, like our, our TIA demonstrated that it can handle, we're, we're not even at fifty percent capacity per the county standards at that intersection. Our eighty-seven units, that it would take, you know, development magnitude the size of ours, like five hundred plus units to start to really, um, impact that intersection to what the county would consider a failure point. Um, and at our meeting, or at the formal meeting, we'll have a traffic engineer and stuff. Um, but I don't really speak traffic engineer. It's complicated. So, but what, like, so our, to help you guys visualize what our impact would be on that intersection, um, our traffic analysis, impact analysis, shows that during peak hours, so that's Monday through Friday, um, morning and evening, rush hour times. Um, the worst-case scenario, worst times, the traffic would back up there fifty feet. That's two to three cars, to help you visualize that. Um, there's a traffic plan on the other side that, that, you know, it's really hard to understand, but that's to help you guys visualize what eighty-seven units will impact on that intersection. And that's well within, um, I think at fiftieth percentile as opposed to like, how you would consider, you know, to be like in the ninety-eighth or ninety-ninth percentile to consider failure or causing needed improvements on that intersection.
Thank you for that explanation. That's one question I'll be asking your traffic engineer when he shows up is talk about the analysis and input from Washington County.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Um, the, uh, so that's, so we spent a lot of time on that. The, um, and then stormwater, or stormwater treatment. Um, if you look at the maps on the wall, there's a big bottom blank area on the bottom right. We have a gigantic stormwater treatment pond that just kept growing and growing and growing. The, uh, so that pond is a fenced-in planted, um, stormwater facility. So, retention pond, planted with plants and trees. The, uh.
Is it that size to accommodate for what Full Mountain provides?
Like what tighter chance accommodation there?
Yeah, one of the issues we'd like to have whomever explain is that when the development happens on the south side above us, above us. Because in the counties, they did not put in appropriate detention facilities. Water comes down, a lot of Rivermead has flooding issues. And I lived off of 131st, I had flooding issues. This is a serious problem. And you guys need to know about it. And so I need to, we're gonna want to have more information about your stormwater retention facility to handle when it rains two inches up the hill.
What did you say that, the mountain was called again?
Full Mountain? Uh, uh, Full Mountain.
Just the whole general area, okay.
Yeah, there has, there's been serious floods.
Do you know when that might have been built?
Oh.
Going of Full Mountain?
Well, that particular development was built, um, late nineties, my memory.
Talking about Full Mountain up that stretch?
Up Peachtree.
Oh, it was built before I moved here, and I moved here thirty years ago, so.
No, it was built in the mid to late nineties.
Mid. I guess you're mid.
Um, and the Collier, all of that development happened in the late nineties and early autumn.
I know that I wanna ask, um, because I come from a landscape architecture background, if it's necessary to, um, put all the water in just that one place? If it could be possibly, um, was it possible to funnel it all there? Well, I, I just, I just see this big.
Yeah, some of the other developers in the area are, 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 to be traditional.
Right, um, yeah, if some of that square footage can be put in the middle of this mass of, um, skinny houses.
Anybody else have questions that you want, or questions you want them to be able to answer?
Um, just a heads up for you when we have the hearing and we're talking about potential conflicts of interest, actual conflicts of interest. I live on River Lane. I'm about half a mile due south. 137th is my only access out of the neighborhood. So, uh, there's a, so I'll be declaring that as a potential conflict of interest. No, no definitive, I don't, that the house, that my house benefits or doesn't benefit. But I'll be declaring that. And also ex parte contacts, that I was at both of the neighborhood meetings that you guys held. And so, uh, that, a heads up, I'll be making those declarations in case you wanna put together a challenge for me. As, as always, I base, I base my decisions on, do you comply with the ordinances and development codes like that? But letting, letting you guys know, so you got the heads up.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, all, all, all have. Traffic issue deals, you know, it'll be good to have your traffic guy here. You know, I, I know I saw in the report the outstanding safety record of Rivermead community getting in and out of there. One accident in the last hundred years or something like that. Um, so, things, things I'm curious about for your traffic analysis, and I know it only takes into account your stuff. Um, there's that new pedestrian crossing there. And as is, it creates issues. It, it, you know, driving in and out when you're westbound and gonna turn left onto 137th. You're not able to ease into the turn lane. You gotta make it fairly quick. So, you're either gonna slow down in traffic or do a quick turn in. And what you see happen sometimes, what I see happen to me sometimes is eastbound traffic going to turn left onto Peach. And using the same turn lane, and both rapidly turning into lane head to head. So, with any, anything that adds into, uh, deal, and, and my traffic concerns are pretty much gonna center around that intersection. Uh, as you currently.
Claire will be taking this discussion during the hearing.
Yeah, yeah, but these are questions.
Yes.
That I'll have for, for the traffic guy. Um, you know, so the restrictions called for the pedestrian island, was that island there when you did your traffic study? It's been hit. They tried to put a sign on it. Yeah. Hit marks, blah, blah, blah.
Are you talking about that new, like crosswalk that they put in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I.
I know.
The, uh, uh, six hundred and twenty-four trips per day, uh, in the traffic report. Uh, I'm gonna wonder, does that include delivery vehicles, service vehicles? You know, the, the world's different than it was four years ago. And half of, a good half of the drug, traffic on our street is FedEx, Amazon, uh, service, service vehicles, plumbing, uh, lots of landscape vehicles, which ends up being a truck and a wide trailer. And that also will be a parking question.
No landscape here. I feel like they'd be HOA.
Perhaps, kind of thing. Yeah, yeah, you know, do you have room for that kind of a thing to park?
I don't even, I don't even room for a trailer. Oh, yeah, no, I know.
In the area. Uh, I noticed a two percent, uh, increase as we look to the future. And I understand how Metro doesn't want to extrapolate into the future so that we're not building traffic lights where we don't need them. Um, I'm, I'm curious on, on your traffic study, if it takes into account, because, uh, somewhere in the requirements, it says you'll take into account new active developments on a deal. If it includes the town center, Charlotte Homes. You, you guys talk about the 150th intersection. Both of them talk about the 150th intersection. It'll be significantly more than two percent in the next two years. You're, you know, two percent per year increased growth from existing unless that's taken into consideration. So, I'm, I'm very curious about that. Uh, I'll be curious about the gap, the two lots not included. Uh, because, you know, as you said, you're connected so that when that develops, but, you know, elephant in the room. This development pretty much makes those undevelopable, uh, for profit, uh, that, that I can see. Uh, if you have a realignment to 137th, it'll S-curve through there. Uh, and, and that's not gonna leave a lot of, add a stormwater thing, add an S-curve, add an exorbitant amount of street fundage that would need to be improved for the number of units you'll be able to put there. And, and it kind of, it, it creates a future issue that we at least, you know, I'm hoping as a city we can look at. Um, that'd be good for me if it did. I'll take, I'll take a grandpa come back.
I have a few questions. Um, Commissioner Bellows raised the detention pond. Um, when are you planning to develop? Um, I am very concerned about the transportation planner report. Quite frankly, the county is going to force that, uh, road to be developed. And that means that somebody's gonna have to buy at least the property up on the road. Maybe both of them are gonna talk about putting a roundabout in. They're gonna be talking about that issue. Ask some questions. Transportation guy. Um, would, I, this is going to be an issue for me. Uh, the road, 137th is narrow. Parking, cars parked on 137th. And we all know people have two or three cars now. Uh, are you gonna have double garages? Are you gonna mandate in your HOA that people have to park a car in the garage? Would, would you be willing to have a ban on having anybody be able to park their vehicles on 137th? Causing essential, serious traffic, transportation problems. Okay, all that's for now. We'll just.
Questions about the sewer? So, is it gonna be, um, like the people who are on septic now, are they gonna have to pay a larger portion of the sewer going in? Or is it gonna be pretty reasonable for everybody?
Okay, just to clarify your question, something you can address later. You're talking about like our, uh, outside of our development?
Yeah. If they're on septic still and then.
Up to it or whatever?
Yeah.
Just an FYI, Washington County has a policy that if a home septic tank fails or has difficult problems, they are required to go on sewer. With sewers within three hundred something feet. Yeah, it's, I've seen it used in multiple jurisdictions. So, it's an issue you need to think about, start with the neighborhood. Thank you for bringing that up, Ken.
Uh, stormwater detention pond, uh, to be, says to be dedicated to the city. Um, who, does the city maintain that thereafter? Do you guys maintain that?
Commissioner, you can have any more questions?
Um, I'd like to see some green space, that's all. Not really a question, comment.
Yeah, I'm surprised you don't have in your plan some kind of little pocket park. I have. Pocket park, I'd have
That's what I was thinking, but I'm pretty sure that's a lot. Right. Off the cars. Especially since high school is, what, ten miles away, twelve miles away? My kids went to Swath in high school.
I transferred to Tiger's.
You were so lucky. One time we made it, my daughter walk, actually. Because if you miss the bus, there is no way to get to school, um, any of the schools. And so there's our kids driving to school. Everybody drives to school.
Yeah, the only bus comes around seven.
Yeah, early.
You're on it for forty minutes to an hour.
Is, is the plan for the school bus to loop around? Or is that a pickup on one thirty seventh?
Yeah, they, they've, they've begun making the kids walk to the bus stop.
Well, in our neighborhood, they make us, or they would've made us walk to Fisher and
Yeah. You know, in elementary school, though, we could
Go down one hundred and thirty seventh, loop it back up.
Right. I, I, I know where you're going, one thirty but I was just curious.
In the scope of our development, I'm overcompensating because I've nothing to do with it. I did have a conversation with a school official at the Tiger School District and they did inform me that the elementary, they don't base any decisions until there's people that need to be picked. Elementary kids, their standard is they make, they, they won't make them walk for the, the two to four blocks. Middle, four to six blocks, and high school, six to eight blocks. That'd be the Tiger School District.
Oh, that's to To, to a bus.
To a bus stop, yes.
Yeah. And the school?
Yeah, the question came up for that.
Yeah. And so, it'd be Deer Creek?
Yes.
And would this be zoned for Tiger to Walleton?
Oh, everything south of, of Old Mountain Road goes to Talbot.
I need to go to a school board meeting.
Just curious, I, I wasn't able to tell on the maps. I didn't load them all off the full size, so I'm not saying they're not on it, just I didn't see it. Uh, on the annexation, uh, portion of it, I know you touch King City along the south half of Beat Bend Road. Will there be a half-street annexation cutout? Will, will that section of one thirty seventh be, or will more of one thirty seventh be included?
I, I'm gonna ask for a statement from you, um, about your intention with this development. To cram as many lots as you can onto seven acres. Kind of who are you building for? How you see this kind of aging in the way people live? And this is, this is not your fault. But everything looks like this, everything is inaccessible, everything is just tall and skinny. And we're gonna have a city of stairs and it's cookie cutter homes. It's beginning to really, really, really bother me. And if you can help me, help me like this more, I'd appreciate it.
I have asked this of each developer, I'm just I've asked, is there any way that you, apartments that are down on one thirty first, the first floor apartments are all disabled? Disabled folk? And is there any way that you could put units, um, that would have, could be, could be spread to be at one, one, one floor? Or have a main floor bedroom and have some of the things upstairs? Because our population and there are more and more people who have disabilities of one sort or another. But this is not a question, I'm just asking you, I've asked every single developer who is coming to us to consider that.
And, and, um, you know, I had my first baby in law sex. I had to go up and down stairs constantly and, um, and it's really hard on young families to have all those stairs. Having your, having it all broken up. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm in a bad mood right now, but I wish that, I, I, I'm gonna look very closely at what our development code says here. And, I mean, all you have to do, you know, go towards the development code and I'll say yes, because, you know, I was a planner too. And if you could, you know, clearly, um, gone by it, you know, I can't say no, but, um, I really wish things were different. I, I'm happy, I can see from your, your layout that
Okay, so is it
Houses where like maybe the bottom
Basically like apartments, but vertical instead of
We call them Stairs. Two flats.
Hills, I mean, both of them could have their front door.
I love my two flats.
Uh,
Any more questions?
Once again, it's probably in the package, but I just can't find it. Uh, the Clean Water Services Service Provider letter. I, I just wasn't, didn't run into it as soon as it's in here.
Yeah, there's an exhibit that has all the service provider letters.
And I saw the other ones, just not Clean Water Services.
In the document.
I don't think so, that wouldn't make sense.
Can I clarify, are we on the annexation now or are we on the
We've been going back and forth.
Yeah, it sounds like we're trying to
Yeah.
They're kind of the same, I mean, they were two separate items on the agenda because of the difference.
So, we'll, we will have, we'll have to do the annexation once.
On one thirty seventh, how much of one thirty seventh will be improved? Your development goes all the way up to Beat Bend, but there's a section there where your town just goes out to one thirty seventh. Is that the only part of one thirty seventh? Have to improve, that's my question. You don't have to answer it now.
How much improvement along one thirty seventh?
See a question, uh, would you be willing to contribute something toward the purchase of
Service
Properties? And the county comes down and says, almighty, thou shalt do it. And the price is, I'm thinking typically the parcel that's immediately on one thirty, uh, Beat Bend. The upper one of the two. So, I'm gonna be, we, we will be asking you that, or whoever's talking.
Does anyone have anything else?
So, I, that's why I keep asking, please. And I, did I interrupt another question of yours? Okay, all right. Anyway, this, now you see why I think this is important so that you understand the kinds of questions that are gonna get asked. Where you're not blindsided.
Yeah, thanks, it's a little painful not to be able to have answers in front of you right now, but well, but that's great.
Yeah, but we can't because this is not
I totally understand that.
It's raising the questions.
Perfect, thank you.
If there's nothing more, I'm, if you need me to do anything else, Ronnie, other than say we're stopping the, the workshop related to the development and annexation?
Thank you.
Okay, then I'm, we're, we're done with your workshop. We, we have some more workshop stuff to do, sorry.
So, thanks for coming, you guys.
Yeah, thank you very much for being tight. And drive safely, it was just starting to come down in buckets.
So, now that we're done with telling our question, can you tell us outside of the, can you tell us how long you've been working on this? When did this open?
I mean, yeah, it's done a lot of work.
July fourth of last year, around the fourth of July of last year.
Well, you made good progress.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's unusually quick.
Yeah, so you guys think it's gonna be feasible to start sewer stuff in twenty twenty five?
I think it's been kind of slow, but the, uh,
Yeah.
An impressive amount of work to get done that quickly.
Had most of it done by October.
One thing, um, I understand that the owners of the town center are gonna pull about two hundred building permits before the summer. So, that means there's gonna be people probably living down the town center by I'm gonna restart, and there are seventeen, eighty, seventeen, eighty-seven units?
Eleven hundred and eighty.
Eleven, I'm sorry, eleven hundred and eighty-seven units going in there. So, the traffic is gonna start. And then there's another development immediately
Oh, man.
That'll be approved.
I wouldn't, I would not run, I would not buy that, I would not buy it, I'm
The traffic is changing.
Yeah, Cody and Steve, I'll be a touch soon. All right, thanks for having me.
What part of town do you live in?
Salwa neighborhood?
Oh, yeah. I was raised, when I was young, in East Morland.
Oh, nice.
The last little project was in the Salwa neighborhood there, a little twenty-three unit, so.
But, you know, it's so hard because people talk about urbanizing. And so, you go around the neighborhoods of the old cities, I mean, I grew up in Chicago. And what we're not, what we're, we're not urbanizing, we are cramming people in, you know?
King City is the most densely populated in, in the state.
As is, or
As is.
Lots of a lot of new development and Metro's kind of driving all that.
Yeah, but I mean, it's already the densest city. And we have transportation.
That's because we don't have any transportation. We have no transportation.
We have F ninety-nine W which has been F since the nineteen eighty, and nothing has been done. And, um, Beat Bend is still a rural road without the, oh, it's been arterial for quite a while. But nothing has been done to improve it. And it's a county road, so cities don't have any control. So, yeah, there's lots of transportation problems. We don't have a grid like you do on the east side.
And, yeah, I mean, most cities were not built for cars in the beginning. And
On the other side of the street, another huge development just got approved, um, on the Tiger Drive that is going to feed into one fifty, two hundred and thirty-seven houses. It'll be
Oh, my gosh, really?
They come down and come up Beat Bend. Yeah, I was following that one. That, that one comes, is one house back, um, Beat Bend Road at April Lane. So, someday that's, they're gonna be having to open up April Lane. If there's a cross from Eltona, if you know where Eltona is?
Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming, it's like sitting quietly while we're dealing with questions, it's kind of awkward, but yeah, we appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, later.
I think it's good for them to know some of, you know, the big picture outside of
It's definitely helpful.
Yeah.
So, why, I, I mean, nobody's coming up with anything innovative in housing.
Yeah.
Yeah, um,
I like my two flats.
I like my two flats too, a lot. Um, but, you know, I'm sitting here and I'm kind of drawing, um, you could have a, I'm thinking a flag lot, but um, not a flag lot, um.
Yeah, but you come in a door and there's a door to the first floor unit and there's just, then stairs go up to the upstairs unit. That's, I mean, that's sort of what those apartments are, except they keep it outside.
That's what ponderosa pines did. Over on one hundred thirty first and Bradley Lane. Or Capello.
Seems like it's a matter of economics to build a separate stairway.
You don't have to if you need it on a hill. Yeah, and you're gonna like
There's all kinds of restrictions, they're trying to get so many units per acre and they gotta make so much money and I say, they're all hamstrung. I'm not trying to justify what you know
That's why, but there's literally maybe one building of the whole bunch.
But it's not economics to build every individual home like you see in East Portland.
It's all gonna be stacked three high, thirty-eight stairs to get to the third floor.
Well, and then Tiger two point O, they have a minimum density of twenty-two.
Yeah.
So, like Rivermead is planned for eight.
It's just
We're watching, we
That's what
Yeah, but they're doing twenty-five.
Which is more than what's minimally required.
We have a minimum, minimum, minimum eighteen.
Yeah.
Ten overall in the entire area. But we have density in the town center and a long Beat Bend road. That's where ninety percent of the density.
I'm just curious, uh, with this development in that empty lot there on the corner, you're wondering, how's that all gonna work in? Are they gonna develop that separately and why are they holding out? And I just had all those questions going around in my mind.
I have, I have some of my thoughts about that, but we can discuss it in a very Let's, yeah, let's go to Commissioner Mitchell's presentation about the stormwater
For the bathroom.
I think we all know where you're talking about, so.
No, what is this corner that they can't, they don't own, they don't?
So, if you look at the shape of it, there's a gap. They want one thirty first, Beat Bend, and the gap in there.
Okay.
You know, a missing piece.
Oh, I forgot, I, I've read all your stuff, but forgot to bring it with me.
Okay, Ro- Ronnie, I need to go to the share screen, right? Okay, I'm there. Oh, it doesn't show, that's okay, I don't, all right.
Can you make it go to the old screen?
Yeah.
I'm going to call up just a minute, I need to.
Ronnie. While we're on break, I don't know if. So the advantages to pass out, is there a copy machine I can? Kick some copies on?
Max, do you have any idea when that corner lot is going to be built on Fisher 131st? The, the most corner.
Oh, um, no idea. I think the developer who built Zuma, which is one of those townhomes, they own that lot and plan on developing it, I think maybe after some of the houses sell.
Okay.
Yeah.
One of those houses is sold at this right now.
Yeah.
And it's for rent.
Yeah, because I think it would be nice to have a little cafe or something there.
Something, but whoever, you know, makes their business there. Hmm.
This neighborhood has to sustain them. I used my echo.
Well, I had a question. I, I personally don't care, but I, I had the question asked. Hey, you're.
Yeah, we've got it, it's gotta be. Can you turn down your volume, please?
I wish I knew how.
That worked at every store.
Down, go down to the bottom of your screen.
They did service sometimes, maybe.
Right, right, right.
But, I got it.
City of its size or smaller or.
So.
Yeah, I don't even know exactly.
Made it true, the question's true.
I made a court document.
Question, yeah, I don't think so.
Upper mirrors, but what?
It's a taking document. And I had to fit as many houses on the property as I could. Mm-hmm.
Is it profitable now?
I was laughing because every small town in Oregon has.
Have to make sense though, or was it just house?
Right, right, I, I know they surround us.
I don't.
At a hundred and.
How?
Ninety-eight, there's three churches.
Oh, that.
I know they surround us. The question was.
Had as much money as they could from the city.
And there's no rooms?
Oh, my God. We're taking, we're taking.
I just found, I found it interesting.
Okay.
Alright.
We're, we're going again, Ronnie.
Thanks for, here you go, put your hole.
You ready with your presentation now?
Yes, I am. At our last meeting with King Water Services, I handed out a real brief, two or three pages. Turn it up. Uh, there was a brief, uh, three-page thing about where the erosion problems were. And so I've expanded it just to get us all on the same page before we discuss it after the presentation. And so that's the intent of doing this presentation to everyone, so that we all see the same information. Uh, and then we're prepared to discuss, um, what our purpose here is. On this first page, the master, the municipal code 2107OB7. This is our study and purpose. Our goal is to study and propose measures advisable for the public interest, safety, health, morals, comfort, convenience, and wealth of the city. So I think that we're trying to do that in this discussion, that's, that's the intent of it.
Can't share anymore.
Does that little block, captioning? Yeah.
What?
Just caption it.
I can't see.
Well, it's designed for people.
Okay, okay, thank you. Alright, so, um, if there are people online, they didn't see the first slide, I'll go back to that, that's the first slide. This is to orient everyone. This is a Google Earth snapshot. The blue represents the main corridors. Fisher Road, east-west, southwest 131st, Beach Bend is up here. This is the new Kingston Square Annexation, 7.16 acres right up here in this area that we just discussed. The two areas of concern that I'll be detailing are down at the King City Park. And over here in Rivermead, there's a ravine coming off of 137th. The two main, uh, stormwater drainages into the area below King City Park. Are Deer Creek coming down the east side. And the stormwater drain from Headwater that starts. Up here and then flows down. Past the tennis courts, under the walkway bridge at the park, and down into. A white area here, which is the, um. The wetland. And then they both exit, all the flows exits through this one ravine that goes into the Tuolten River. I took photos on February 23rd after the, during that big three-day rain event that we had.
Yeah.
And so this shows the falls there, this is at the outlet of the wetland. And it comes down through the ravine, and then the right side is flowing out to the Tuolten River. Pretty impressive flow. This is a video of that.
And that tree that you're seeing that's toppled over is a full-size tree.
And it was upright in 2019. So that's a video of that flow.
There's some beavers down there.
It's a pretty good stream, and it was a little scary right here at the edge, it was still raining, and you can see it's dripping off of my hat.
View from the park?
Uh, that's looking south to the Tuolten River, and then it was looking up toward the parks and the West Park.
For real?
Okay, yeah. That's like on our side of the river.
Yeah, that's just south of the park.
Right, so this is looking sort of northwest up toward the wetland below the park. Okay, this, this video is showing the wetland outlet where the two streams come together to give you an idea of. A high volume of flow, and there's no high-volume bypass, it all comes together and just goes right down together into that ravine.
Uh-huh.
And you can, you'll see here, uh, in just a little bit as I pan to, to right after this. Little bit.
Is that above the falls?
Yes.
Okay.
It's in the wetland below the park. I wanted to get information on how many of these high-flow events we have each year. But, I haven't got that yet, but it's several. Now you'll see here, this is the bridge, the walkway that got pushed out of, out of the way. And it's kind of backing up the water a little bit, but then it's flowing here down over the falls.
That little mandate bridge, you know, or?
Yeah, they put it back in place, yeah. It's only about, I don't know, maybe eight, 10 feet down. It's a little.
I think it was rickety when they put it in.
But where there's no flow, it's very safe, you can step off of it and just hit your feet with. But here, if you stepped off of it, you'd be down in the ravine. This is a sketch showing, um, it's based on field measurements made by Dr. Paul Whitney and Dr. Roland French, their PhDs, not, they're medical doctors. And they took these measurements starting in 2019. To show and document how the erosion has progressed. The red dotted line is 2019. The green dotted line, 2021. Black line is approximate location at the edge of the ravine. The falls headcut, these red lines here represents the headcut where it was in those day, in those years. It's progressing backwards, and it's moved thirty-seven, thirty-seven feet from here to here in six years, about six feet a year. Paul Whitney did a calculation, he estimated about sixty-five cubic yards per year of soil into the Tuolten River. Put it in, uh, in the terms of six 10-ton, 10-ton dump trucks dumping soil into the river each year. That kind of puts it into perspective. This is what it, what he, what I mean by headcut. This shows, uh, the flow that was taken just last week, just a trickle. But if you look down here on the right side, you see what happens at the headcut, is that water comes over in the turbulence. It continues flights, down below, and then that just falls against the river.
We'll have to figure out how to make water go uphill.
Uh, one of the other concerns that I have is, even though there's a sign saying not responsible for loss or injury suffered, we know about the ravine. And this is a picture that I took when I was down there last week. Two small boys playing along the edge of the ravine. And they're just having fun, but they don't realize they're standing on an undercut edge ledge there that could go in.
In a minute.
Okay.
Um. It's about a twenty-foot drop there down to the bottom.
Oh, really?
Oh. Some places there might be a little higher than that.
Yeah.
It doesn't look like twenty, it's, they're stories, but, um, it's a concern that I think maybe we should look into putting some protective barriers up. Or, at least along the edge of the ravine, we wouldn't want to block the trail, but, um, it's, it's a concern that I have.
Well, for safety concerns, would you guys ever consider blocking off the trails?
I mean, if it, eventually the trail's not going to exist. If it's so bad that the wetland is mitigated. Um, yeah, it'll be something.
Anyway, now that we know about it, it's a liability that we need to consider. Just, just a thought. So, if not mitigated, the erosion will continue to deposit volumes of soil into the river each year. The headcutting, big drop-off will continue to receive three a year. Headcut will reach and damage the wetland. And the distance there, if it's six feet a year, could be years. Maybe four before it reaches the wetland. Uh, next, um, just talk about the yellow circle up here in Rivermead. The flow of the water from the upland, um, Bull Mountain area comes under Beach Bend Road, flows across the transmission line corridor. Down 137th, and then goes under a culvert and down into this ravine. This is, these are photos taken in that February rain event, showing the water from Bull Mountain going under, that flows under Beach Bend Road. Coming across the transmission line corridor, continuing to flow over to 137th. This is the flow down side of 137th, there's good stream flow. It's right down in this area, it goes into a culvert, it's a double-sided culvert. And what on the right shows the outlet of that culvert, flowing west toward that ravine. And it drops down into the ravine, and it's a really deep ravine there. I didn't get down to the bottom because it was very difficult to get to. But I did manage to get down far enough to snap a photo showing the, the current and ongoing erosion in that ravine. And that, um, high water flow, those high water flow events are going to continue just to cause more and more erosion. Uh, and there's no high-flow bypass for that water flow, it's always going to flow there. And so let's see, Water Services can come up with a, a design or some way to get a high-flow bypass or to mitigate that, it will just continue.
I believe I heard Chris mention, Chris Bachner over at the US Center meeting last time, that best way to mitigate it while it's still on private property would be to. Slow it down using outlets along the Westside Trail Corridor. And creating wetlands to make it so where it's not.
Right, so it'll, high flow will flow into there and then slowly, yeah.
Yeah.
Percolate.
Uh, this screen is, I've got this in the handout, and I, I would suggest that maybe we, uh. I'm done with the presentation here, I'll hand it out, where we can go through these so we understand what the current health and safety plan and community development code says about stormwater. And. And if you have any more questions, you want to go back to any of the slides or comments?
Harry, I think we need to focus on the one in the park because the one that's going to Rivermead is not in the city. And we don't have any, rightly or wrongly, we don't have any jurisdiction.
So, I've got, I've got a couple of things, I'll kind of piggyback and.
But, anyway.
Sure, yeah.
Velo engineer?
No, I'm mechanical engineer.
Mechanical engineer, are you a velo engineer?
No, surveyor.
Okay, because I'm, I'm, I, I once saw, um, it was a really neat landscape architecture project where, um, there was a hillside that occasionally had, um. And it was, they put a series of dams along the hillside that during dry periods, people could sit on. And, but during the, um, during downfalls, um, they slowed the water down. So, would slowing the water down keep that headcut from. Progressing?
The park?
Yeah.
It'd be really hard to build a dam and a wetland.
I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, you've got your, this is sideways, and if you have a dam along the stream.
So Commissioner Bell, that's what we talked about for the fifth, with that location, based on some of the environmental plans and stuff. If, you're going to have to lay out the site.
Okay.
What do you mean by the dam? I'm not a engineer.
Right now, it's really steep.
Yeah.
And as the river comes in, it comes and it circulates back, and then that waterfall coming back and getting the headcut. Uh, but you also have the flow of the Tuolten River, a high-water band, which hits the edge of that stream, and then it creates a jetty. And it's also undermining the size of the hill, so.
Uh-huh.
When we talked with, uh, some of the erosion specialists and things, they said, probably what you need to do is lay back the sides. So if you have the edge of the creek like this, you need to reduce that angle, and then also kind of reduce the angle from the river itself. So that's a big removal fill permit, and that's a joint application for it, and that's no rain, fishery, if you have some core of engineers and the whole in yards. Not to mention the cost of doing that, so what we were trying to talk with folks with, we spoke with, uh, folks from Falls and River Keepers. We spoke with Fallin, Soil and Water groups. Um, we've tried to come up with ways that we might be able to roll that into a potential boat launch and project. roll that into a potential boat launch and projects and things of that nature, but it's so far away that we don't think that we can tie it into that project. Some of the things that the staff has proposed is like a stormwater fee that the council could adopt, but that's really not, not very palatable because it's not politically, uh,
Um, would Mike actually pay their portion of that fee?
People don't like it when we try to raise taxes or anything like that, and that would essentially be a tax, right? An erosion or stormwater tax. And so, we proposed some of those mechanisms to give us some money that we could then apply to the fix, but so far, it hasn't gone very far. So, those are efforts that we have staff taken. Um, we've tried to work with Clean Water Services to kind of pursue grants or some project money and things like that. And they're still working on some ideas and concepts, but, um, I haven't seen it get very much traction yet. It does seem to be gaining momentum, but I haven't seen anything materialize yet.
Maybe we can.
So, I'm, I'm, right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish, finish the presentation. Can I deal? Oh, oh, you meant, you're just about to, because that's okay.
I was getting ready to add, no, I, he started to talk, I was going to.
Anyway.
Dean, maybe we should go, go through this, and then, uh, this would be for all of us to review what is currently said in the comprehensive plan and the community development code. These are excerpts from some of that, so we all know what the current comprehensive plan says we ought to be doing with stormwater. So, the first one is from the K T M P, page five, says, "Treat stormwater from new and existing development uphill." Next one, these are just excerpts.
Yes.
Page fourteen, "Reduce runoff and heal existing erosion." Seven, page seventy-four, "Mitigate high-flow events and prevent further degradation of the existing drainage." "Future developments to mitigate high-flow events and prevent further degradation of the existing drainage ways." Uh, the next one, "City will abide by regulations to reduce runoff and heal existing erosion damage to implement recommendations from the South Bull Mountain Stormwater Study." And from the C D, that's should be Community Development Code, not D C. Um, "All stormwater management and erosion control measurements shall comply with the applicable requirements and standards of Clean Water Services." Uh, this is my note, that the South Bull Mountain Stormwater Study and associated analysis are now, and their last meeting, I think we heard, and we hear.
June twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, that's what I thought, completed by June twenty twenty-five. And so, once complete, will the city council revise the community development code include Bull Mountain stormwater requirements and standards for new development? So, I just wanted everybody to realize that this is already things that we are committed as the Planning Commission to make sure we comply with.
So, the thing that I handed out, it's kind of shows you, so what we have is our master plan that says, "We're going to do this, existing and heal past stuff." Uh, pretty much the only thing I find in the existing code is, uh, stormwater management, erosion control. Uh, "All stormwater management and erosion control measures shall comply with applicable requirements and standards of Clean Water Services." And so, the gap is, Clean Water Services can every port probably do out June twenty twenty-five. And, but they don't set ordinances, they don't set policy. So, if they have a recommendation on what action to take, but there's no ordinance, there's no standard that we require to be followed, developers, correct me if I'm wrong, can choose to not do what's recommended by Clean Water Services, but to do what's only required by the ordinance.
Right now, our service, uh, right, they still have their regulations on that currently on the book. Once they adopt their new stormwater plan or new stormwater regulations, those will be, those will be.
Okay, those will be effective as regulations?
Yeah, when Clean Water Services adopts theirs, our code.
Piggyback.
Yeah, because you have to.
Perfect, perfect.
We have, have given that area of development to Clean Water Services. We don't do it in-house.
Okay, I, I have probably misunderstood comments from Clean Water Services, so.
The problem that we have as cities is that other cities apply stormwater fees to their water and sewer.
Uh-huh.
And that helps them pay for stormwater fixes that are outside of the sphere of Clean Water Services, and we haven't done anything like that. If I proposed it, I suggested it, but again, it's that, that tax, that additional cost of people on their water as well that would allow us to then kind of, to address some of these erosion controls.
So, um, kind of, I'm thinking, things, proposed actions that we can talk about, getting together and kind of prioritizing. Uh, one would be dealing with the at-the-park deal because no matter what it would cost to fix it, just wait until we get a lawsuit. The cost to fix it will have been nothing compared to the fatality of that kid going down. Right, and I go out on that, I go out on that, and I can see, you know, I follow game trails and I can, I can see where the traffic is, and, and the traffic is exactly what you would expect. It leaves the trail, it goes to see what the cool view is on the edge. I mean, that's where it's all worn down. That's what everyone does. I can see, I see the trails, and we, you know, that's, we have a serious liability issue right now. I mean, we need a temporary fix and a permanent fix. Um, second, uh.
I'm going to have to find a different, different dish, okay.
Okay, uh.
Thanks for.
They developed the action plan to mitigate the erosion from the West Side Trail drainage, and it was said, "That's in Rivermead, it's not in the city, we can't do that." And isn't that what they said on Bull Mountain? When they couldn't, when they didn't fix outside their jurisdiction? We can fix inside.
That's the C P O four K was forged.
Yeah.
I was fighting with the City of Tiger, and it was still USA then.
Right.
Or changed to Clean, and every, it's not our problem.
Right. We have, we have our West Side Trail, we can have stormwater detention facilities. We can, we can ease, I mean, it's all, it's the high-flow that does the cut, you know? And so, so if you can stretch that out, um, and we can do that.
I actually disagree with you, I'm not just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The pro, I'll tell you what the big problem is. King City doesn't have the money that large cities, just like he was saying, where they have fees, where they have a pot of money that they can use to do this kind of stuff, it's not cheap. And we don't have that pot of money. What we need to do is figure out how to get, so we can apply the right grant once the, the master plan is, and get council to say, "Yes, we're going to apply for that grant tomorrow." So, that is the bit, first thing I think we need to do. Get a fence to protect kids.
And adults.
Well, you know what I mean.
People.
Yeah, people.
Yeah.
And get on the stick to get in, first in line to get grants from Clean Water Services. It's dollars, and the city doesn't have dollars.
If I may just really quickly, were, were you aware that Clean Water Services is looking at that stream and the West Side Trail to do some restoration along that corridor?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're trying to accommodate that restoration, uh, in our plan along that strip. So, our hope is that we can get some restoration dollars for that segment of the creek that goes alongside the West Side Trail from Beak Bend down to where it hits the culvert.
Yeah, right, right.
Our, our hope is to kind of get that meeting.
And I see that in the development plan. I, my, my guess, my uneducated guess is it will take even more than that.
Yeah, but it's going to take time, yeah.
That tied up in the power line park?
Yeah, that's a power line park. So, our, our hope is, and actually, the two properties that are at the corner, John's and Larry's that you guys were talking about earlier, um, I tried to get Clean Water Services to consider working with Washington County to, uh, purchase those two properties and work for like a stormwater enhancement project or park, validation like Corner Park or Jason City or something like that.
Yeah, because it's, you can't make, you're not going to make money developing it.
I, I know.
Yeah.
And if the county insists on doing a roundabout, that top property's going to be area.
I think you did a roundabout toward the upper northeast corner. It could serve a majority of the land, about two point four acres, I believe, two of them.
Sounds about right.
You, you could put it in a roundabout that has radius of about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty feet, and you connect to older than, than a hundred and thirty-seven, to save the majority of the problem. But that's not topic, why you guys are talking about erosion controls.
Right, so, what?
Any, any thoughts? Where do we go with this?
Well, one, one thing that I heard in our last meeting with C D, or Clean Water Services, was that they're looking to implement some opportunities to use some of their new plans, some of their mitigation methods. And I sense that there might be some, some way that we might be able to partner with them to get some of this work done. And I thought that they had some interest, uh, and feedback looking closely at the things that we talked about down at the park. And so, some of the action plan could be to, if they've got dollars for, for doing some example plant, you know, some, some study plots, to try their methods, maybe we could come up with a way to partner with them with grants, get the city council, make a resolution or make a recommendation to the city council to start that process.
Exactly what I was saying, so we're first in line. So, that's what I'm saying, build the fencing, you know, protect people who bust through this. And, uh, and, um, I think your presentation should be given to the council.
Second.
Soon, but use that as, number one, I think we should have a joint meeting. This is something that should be a joint. When I was on the Tiger Council, we had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission twice a year where we discussed big policy issues that cross jurisdictions. I think this is a perfect subject to do a joint council meeting. Wouldn't have to be the whole meeting, but to have a chunk of the meeting be joint where we could talk about this issue after this presentation began. So that everything could be in, in a row and ready. I'm trying to think, how we, how are we ready so when June happens and it goes to the county commission board to approve it, we're ready? We've got our ducks in a row. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Mike? How do you recommend, what, what is your sense? If we were to make, if we were to make a motion to make a recommendation to the council?
We can't do it in a workshop, we have to.
What I would suggest to the Planning Commission, actually, obviously, is have staff draft up a resolution for you and work with Max on how, what kind of language you want to see in that resolution. Have this body, uh, make a recommendation to the council.
And maybe also include, uh, suggestion that the council here, I heard somebody say, "Make this presentation to the council so they can see what."
And have a work, and have a joint meeting to discuss this issue.
But I, I would just interject that the council's aware of the situation as well. That we're all aware of the situation. The question is, where are we going to get the funds over to make this fix?
Well.
And we don't have, first, we need to get the plan. Then we need to get permits off of that plan, and we have to get the money to actually do the fix. So, it's a multi-stage process that's going to take. At least Tiger's been working on theirs for ten years, they said, and they still haven't gotten there.
Fix of some sort, I was, I, I'm not sure I see it. Well, you know, unless there's a bypass, unless you can come up with an easy bypass.
Yeah, that's what you have to do. So, if you take, and you go down to the park, and you go down to where the volleyball courts are, the, the sand volleyball, and then walk that pathway, uh, left, you'll see where Tiger addressed their headcut as it was coming towards the bridge as well. And you'll see they have a triple culvert, high-capacity bypass, and that's their temporary fix.
Yes.
And so, that helps slow down the headcut, but they're, they've been working on the permanent fix for like over ten years now.
And didn't you say that it was a billion dollars?
Yeah, they were.
It's pretty substantial.
Temporary fix was, yeah, the temporary fix was like a million and change, so.
So, it was a pretty substantial project. So, things, you know, not to conflate different things, but it's kind of three different issues. The King City Park deal, the Down One Thirty-seventh, and the more developments coming, our master code says they're supposed to address prior development issues. What are we doing to make sure that actually happens?
That's why I said what I said.
Yeah.
I was, it was very clear from their body language, because I was looking right at them. They didn't have a clue about.
Can, can, can I pass along, because it was a public meeting, what was said at the neighborhood meeting or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, you know, they, they said that these very questions were raised at the neighborhood meetings. And, and they said, and I don't mean to speak for anyone or miss it, you know, say things poorly, but, but they said that, that they were required to completely address all the stormwater issues created by their development, but that's, but that's it.
Oh, that's not.
You know, they had to take care of every drop of rain like that.
That's what the problem has been, and that's what happened. One quick story. Walnuts, if you turn on to Good, um, Gardie, there's a housing project that's up the hill at just, there's a little street that is actually between, but Gardie comes right there. But when Washington County had that development built, they built it for the hill that was totally undeveloped. When all the development happened up above, there was so much water coming down, it flooded out two houses totally. By that time, it'd be the annex to the city. The city had to take out everything that had been done, redo it. It was several million dollars worth of work, because the county does not require appropriate, they don't have to do anything but what's created by their development. Unlike in the cities, they have to think about what's coming downhill because for some reason, water seems to go downhill. That's the problem in the county.
Max, what, what's the two different measure, measuring techniques, peak flow and?
And, um, like, dance capacity or something? Yeah.
So, there's two ways to kind of measure and monitor, and what they said is pretty accurate in truth to what Clean Water Services regulates, which is max flow. And they have just a calculator based on square feet that generates with max flow water would be based on that square footage, and I don't, I'm not a water engineer, so I don't know all that. I believe that's Clean Water Services, essentially.
I suspect that they've had some pretty.
I suspect that they've had some pretty in-depth conversations with Clean Water Services because their first concept had two homes on either side of that stormwater, and it was like half the size.
Yes, and they had to-
And then they- they like doubled or-
The first meeting was an eighty-nine unit thing. By the second meeting, it was eighty-seven due to an expanded stormwater drainage.
Right.
They were required to expand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm not a fan of where that stormwater facility is either because it impacts the ability to move a hundred thirty seventh potentially. So, I'll let you guys do it.
Stormwater- stormwater facilities don't have to be just big ponds, big ponds in the ground, big square ponds usually in the ground. In landscape architecture school, we had jokes about civil engineers who liked to do straight lines. Where we would do things like this. Um, and they don't have to be set off to the side. And, um, and I've- I've seen some, um, some retention ponds. Trying to remember the difference between detention and retention. Um, there've just been grassy knolls that when it's not raining, it's just a nice grassy knoll that the neighborhood can use, you know? And, um, we- we don't have to have a bunch of straight lines.
Um, a perfect example of what you're saying, you go down ninety-nine and the Wildlife Refuge is on one side of the road, and there's a big field. In the summer, they raise hay on that field. In the winter, it's all full of water. So-
That, by the way, keeps my house from flooding because on the toilet, the bank on the other side of the river is lower than my bank.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, it has to flood that whole thing to get that last five feet up to my house.
Yeah. Yeah, but I'm using the- the-
Yeah. I- I appreciate that every time I have to buy it.
Yeah, yeah. And when I drove home from therapy yesterday, there were definitely, there were lots of, you know, mommies leaving baby ducks.
Right. And then you have burn root reservoir.
So, can we refocus on steps? What do we need to do?
What, just- just a proposal. It's, we- we can't make any decisions here or take any actions. But perhaps someone at the end of our next meeting, which is only two weeks from now, right?
No, it takes all nine.
So, it is a month away.
We get a night off.
Sorry, yeah. I thought I'd mentioned that at the last meeting.
Well, what do you do with your Wednesday nights?
I'll figure- I'll figure. All about it, it's a whole, long discussion. Uh, okay, so-
I have a meeting with Clean Water Services to talk about the issue at the park, specifically in a couple of weeks, potentially.
And that's the highest priority, I believe.
Yeah, and so, I can raise this issue, say that we've had a planning commission meeting, we're thinking about drafting a resolution. What kind of language is useful to bring to CWS and, you know, other state agencies to potentially do some like ecological restoration, shoring up the park?
It sounds like a good idea to me.
Yeah.
Other steps can we take to work with them to get a project going?
I can ask about it.
Yes. And if you want, you can show them the-
Well, we're actually going down to the site.
Okay.
I'll point out. I'll look at your diagram.
Yeah, but don't- don't go near the edge.
I don't know, that's-
If you do, it would be traumatic.
That would get their attention.
Right. Oh, no. Break my leg.
This is geology. What is the geology underneath?
So, there's some hard bedrock and soft soil on top. It's just the water cuts through and is washing it away.
So, what you have is you have permeable soil across first like twenty feet or so.
Oh, it's twenty feet.
And then you get that shale non- permeable.
That gray nipple that you saw in that hit.
Yeah. And then what happens is the water that's sitting up above there from that man-made wetland is percolating down and-
That's shale.
Shale, and it goes right underneath it, so it's like turns it into like slime almost.
Ew.
And then it destabilizes the painting and the asphalt because it falls out because wetlands underneath and on top of it, so-
It's the liquefaction factor they talk about in earthquakes.
But they created that wetland and changed the way that Deer Creek drained off originally.
They really changed that, too.
They changed the whole thing. And I- I think that that's part of the problem there is that they created a wetland on soils that probably weren't meant to be a wetland. I mean, it's a great wetland. It's thriving.
Yeah.
But it, I think it exacerbated the- the issues with soils there. And, um, fortunately with the flows of the falts and cutting in there, and then the head cut of that additional runoff from both of those drainages coming down one channel. It's a great issue. So, you're gonna have to wrap it, let it play back to sides and figure out a way to kind of slow down that erosion. That's a big project.
Yeah.
So, I think you, uh, if you scientists and engineers come up and help a plan, and once you have a plan, then you have to go get permits. And then you have permits and a plan, and then you take all the bills.
Yeah.
You take all the bills.
Money's going away.
Well, we want to prioritize this and get a resolution presented to the council. And see if we can at least get first step in making it a priority.
Yeah, okay. But I think the first step is getting council to correct and find funding to build fencing. I think that's the very first.
If you gain the resolution. It's like she hasn't budgeted seasons coming up here in the next couple of months. We'll probably add it as like park maintenance line item or something to that effect. And then we'll try to be like a summer project or something.
So, you could kind of get an idea of what the fencing would cost before then?
Yeah, my- my only, the only thing I can think about is concrete in that area. Might not be very favorable, but, um, it needs to be all right all around. Yeah, I think, I think I'll make an exception.
When things kind of dry out, yeah.
Have a kind of wraparound the top of the cliff.
Yeah.
The whole side, too.
And there's a sign that says danger of collapse.
It may, it may result in some, uh, idealistic recommendations, but it may not result in changes to the regulations. And if- if there are good intentions, how do we get those rolled in to making sure that new developments and our requirements reference those or at least try to get new developers to incorporate those, even though they may not be actual new regulations in Clean Water Services?
They've got us a pilot project.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Max, but don't we have something in there that may refer guide?
Uh, yeah, but I think the stormwater guide that we were referencing is the- our services.
Right. But we could potentially add-
We can condition it and require them to do something extra.
Right. We could potentially add CD, um, look at our stormwater guide in, but we just need to ensure that it is fair, equitable, and clear and concise.
Fair and objective.
Fair and objective.
Fair and objective.
And if you do that in your resolution, you're in the right course.
Yeah, maybe you could start on some language.
But what- what Tiger has done, uh, they use the Clean Water Services, but they also have their stormwater guide, which has aesthetics things of that nature. So, you don't get your very stormwater jails.
Yeah, we did- we did that.
Called stormwater jails, if you will.
We set that up when we set the CE up when I was on the council.
Yeah, you had a bunch of landscape architects in Tiger.
So, we don't see the stormwater jail.
We need some like actual water engineering put into that. So, that could be another thing that we would request from Clean Water Services for funding.
Just to get to the, get the engineering and the framework.
Because the Tiger guide is incredibly technical.
Yeah, I know.
All the people who- who dropped the designs are incredibly technical and they can-
Right, exactly. Okay, this is one thing.
Do we feel like we have a plan?
I don't know what it is if we do.
Max meets with Clean Water in a couple of weeks.
First, we have the discussion and we came up with some, we've gotta do the fencing, we've gotta come up with a- a resolution. And edu- I think we do need to do some educating of our newest council, particularly our newest councils. Your presentation, and I know the issue, was- was really good. So, I think it would be very useful to do that presentation as- as an in, you know, before they get, deal with the ordinance.
I agree. Yes, it's great.
But you wouldn't mind doing it. Yeah, but-
I like your presentation.
But it's- but it's, I think it's valuable to have it come from a planning commissioner.
We should- we should take the opportunity to have planning commissioners talk to, uh, councilors. So, we are people at faces and real life to each other.
Because I don't think some of the newer councilors really know what the planning commissioners, planning commission.
We're still working on our new councilors. We're bringing one along. We have goal-setting session coming up here, uh, this month. So, I hope that that gives us a chance to kind of convene with them about some of the issues that they've been facing forward. And hopefully we can work on a project in there here as well. Um, there's a lot on that.
Do you think we could schedule a one of their meetings, pick it up and have a segment?
Yeah, but right now, I think we're just trying to figure out how to focus this first.
Okay.
So, let us kind of meld first and figure out how to focus and get everybody paddling in the same direction. And then, like, I think it would be time to introduce some- some other ideas on that.
Okay.
But right now, I wanna-
Can I make a, can I make an observation from an outsider viewpoint?
Sure.
We could- we could start by not segregating our discussions with phrases like the new councilors. I mean, we're- we're segregating those three.
Well, I'm thinking it's the new council altogether. I really, I only have one person on there with any practical knowledge, and that's Mark. Everybody else on there is relatively mere.
Okay.
That's- that's what I meant.
It's a brand-new council. They're trying to get everybody to work together. It's gonna take some time.
Okay.
It's gonna be a work process, and I need them to tell us what their goals are. So, that way, the ship has a direction, right? And that way, we can go forth and try to get this. So, when I say new council, I'm playing the whole-
Mark.
I was- I was jumping into an interpretation.
This is Mark's third year on the council. He's the senior.
So, Max, your meeting with CWS when?
I'm not sure exactly when. Uh, I was just approached, and they just said, hey, we're gonna go down to the park in the next couple of weeks.
Would you like any of us to order with you?
I can certainly ask them. I'm sure-
Any other commissioners like to-
Yeah, I'd go with, put on some boots and head down the mud.
That would help. I don't know if that would help.
And I can ho- I can come if I can hold on to somebody. Well, I'm not-
Or maybe you wanted to do it separately, or we need-
We like, I was just about, I was about to be Ronnie.
What was that, Ronnie?
We need to limit our numbers.
Can't have a clump.
Well, it was- it was interesting when-
You could all like a, uh, field trip or retreat or something, and you wouldn't be able to talk to this fire out there. So, it won't have to be, you know, if you all go, it has to be publicly noticed. Right, that's what I'm saying.
Let everybody know.
Say, hey, we're gonna do a two-word retreat thing.
I don't see why-
It has to be publicly noticed. You wouldn't be allowed to talk to this fire out there.
And I'd also wanna run it by Clean Water Services to first.
Well, maybe one-
It might be better to have one, two, or three.
One, I was just gonna say, one or two people go because we know that you'll report back every word that is said. Somebody will have their record.
There are all these public meetings that I don't know about. Um, I didn't know when these guys had their public meetings. I don't get noticed at all.
I also don't get noticed.
Well, that's a long story.
Can you just like notice planning commission members when they have? Maybe put that in the book somewhere?
So, where that is two hundred and fifty feet from the development.
Yeah.
That's as far as they would do. That is, per our code, it is their job to do that.
Right.
All we do is we've, Max has been putting it up on our website.
Which once- once again worked spectacularly for the neighborhood meeting.
Uh-huh.
Because the people that watched this saw it.
I had no idea.
Well, it's a state law.
It is a state law, but it's also, you shouldn't speak-
Uh, ethics commission says, I can't.
Oh, you can?
Well, I asked about this. Yeah, I could, I could, I could, and then I can't, I can't.
For them to discuss business. They can't discuss business. And then what they probably need to do is when they come in, is declare that they had a-
Like I just did.
That you attended the-
Yeah, because I, you know-
Yeah, at the meeting, I told him.
Kind of the people.
And I didn't take part in the meeting.
And how do we know what the people want? I should go to the meeting.
You can go to the meeting. There's nothing wrong with that. It's just you just need to declare that you're an expert.
And what I'm saying is I had no idea that this was going on or that there was a meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, so it's great.
Oh, well, we don't do that. Uh-
But you'd know when it's happening, wouldn't you?
Not necessarily. We don't, that's really good.
Yeah, they don't always tell- tell us, like-
Oh.
It's just a part of their code. They have to keep minutes and track it all, and then they present it with their application. So, like, we conducted our community meeting for the code protection. Those are the others. Here's the ministers, list of everyone that, and we just- We're basically a regulating agency. Here's the regs and check that law.
But like putting it on the website, you know, the, I- I brought this exact issue up on the town center thing.
Uh-huh.
The two hundred and fifty radius means anything on the other side of the power lines doesn't ever have to tell anyone on this side of the power line. That's two.
That's right, yeah.
That, it- it doesn't make sense. But you put it, you know, if you keep- keep an eye on the King City website, and they have events, upcoming events, and they've been good, and they put it on there, and you can see what's going on.
So, the developer's putting it on the website?
No, I'm putting it on there.
Max is putting it on there.
You know when they are.
The ones that I know, yeah, I've put on, like, the fire station had one, and I didn't know about it until, like Mike mentioned, they gave it and signage and stuff in their application. And then I'm like, oh, okay, cool. They did their community meeting. Um, but PCD was very actively involved. So, they reached out to me, you know, many times and made sure I knew, um, things in square. I knew that they were doing them, but I didn't know when.
Did you ask them?
Okay, I think he- I think he put on the website that for the first-
They did two, yeah.
They did, and- and they emailed, they, in addition to notice, they emailed, yeah, they emailed everyone that showed up the first time.
Right.
For the fallout.
City require the developer, the city, what, what, yeah, so that you could put it on the website?
As a courtesy?
Yes. Do you think, Ronnie?
See, why not? Uh, I'd have to do a, I'd have to do a code amendment.
Oh, just to ask them-
Because the code doesn't say they have to do that.
Yeah.
But, they will.
If you request, it's a state law, too. So, the state law, there's state law for notice requirements, and we don't wanna show a foul.
But could we, could, yeah, but could we ask them to just send an email with the date so we could put it on the web?
It could be something that I could bring up at like the pre-app meeting, and they could do this courtesy, yeah.
Yeah.
And each developer I've seen in my long history on the planning commission has wanted to do these neighborhood meetings.
Yes.
Help them out. And so, we're not giving, you're not putting an owner's requirement on them. You're-
It's a win-win, yeah.
And the only thing that's owners is typing up that list of all those address labels and getting them on. I've done this, I've done that.
Sending an email to the city is hardly a-
Yeah, it's, should not be an insurmountable ask. And again, we have pre-application meetings where we meet with everyone before they even apply. So, I'll keep it in mind for that time.
And you just have it on a list of things to-
Yeah, checklist of that.
Because I assume you have a checklist.
Uh, I'm just going with line.
For something like the, uh, action plan list, so that we know what to expect and when to expect it, things like that we've discussed, I don't wanna see just kind of go into a black hole and then not know what's going on with it, if you know what I mean.
Right.
So, here's what I've taken note of, is that Max is gonna meet with CWS, I don't know when, and you don't know when.
And I can give you an update of when that happens and give you a debrief.
staff will draft a resolution to present to the council. Do we have any idea of when to expect that?
Well, can I get some clarification on what that resolution is? Is it just to prioritize?
Yeah, it's just a policy.
This project, the, the city will be working on applying for grants and reviewing anyway, so.
Well, I think it's broader than that, Mike.
Yeah.
It, it, yeah, it includes King City Park, it includes the current hazard, fencing, it includes King City Park, it includes future development, addressing, uh, Clean Water Services study results, and how to get those incorporated into requirements for new development.
Well, the question I have- No, I'm gonna interrupt you right now.
All right, go ahead.
Their study isn't done until June.
Right.
I don't see how we can incorporate anything until they have finished their study.
I agree with you. So all I'm suggesting is that we, we make, we have a plan, so once those are out, if we know whether or not there's gonna be new regulations, or if there's not, that we somehow address those so that new developers know that we're gonna implement some new requirements. How do we get those?
Also, you know, when you put together your staff report, and I give agency notice to Clean Water Services, among others, they will give me a, an, a, an actual statement that will have its own conditions that I then refer to in the report for our conditions of approval. And I don't know for sure, but I would imagine that some of their standard conditions that they have in place for almost all development will change when they have the new, when they have the new, new guide and the new regulations. So, and that could be something that, you know, I'll compare it to the old one, but it, it has like erosion control and-
Okay, and those, those are the bullet points that I, that I've kind of noted, and I'm hoping that we can somehow, I don't-
But you know, they have to adopt the plan after it's done. The county is going to have to adopt the CWS plan. That's not gonna happen immediately, that'll probably be a minimum three months.
Future, like, that new develop- We wanna, we wanna make, we wanna make sure that new development addresses stormwater issues that were created.
I absolutely agree with you.
That's, that's the main point.
Yeah.
And if there are new, new, new requirements, that they understand that when those become apparent, that they're, they would be expected, we would expect them to adopt them. I don't know if that's-
I think, I think you're looking at a year before that gets through, well, maybe not quite a year, but I'd be surprised if they, if, knowing how the commissioners work, their schedule, I wouldn't see it till year, close to year end, at the earliest. Not, not that anybody's dawdling, I just, I've been around the system long enough, things work so darn slowly, you know, if it's on the regulation side. I wish I could wait a minute.
And then just to the King City Park?
So what I'm, what I'm gonna say is that our code is already gonna trigger when Clean Water Services finishes their proposal. So our code already triggers that. So the question is, what's the resolution and what does it entail? Resolution just to say, B, the planning commission feel that the drainage and erosion problem at the park is a high priority, and the council should consider it as one of their goals.
Yeah.
Essentially, right? I, I think that's kind of rounds out the gist of what you were talking about, Mr. Mitchell, and from there, then that resolution to this is acceptable, and they can then say, yes, this is one of our priority goals.
And it can also be broad without being too specific.
And can you kind of mention that?
Can you, can you get P, the part of our ordinance that Clean Water does it, we adopt it?
Right here, all stormwater management and erosion control measures self-comply with the applicable requirements and standards of CWS section right here.
It's already triggered as soon as they adopt their stormwater plan.
They're built into the, they, they're, we're in their service district, and so you can't build any kind of stormwater stuff without getting Clean Water Services to sign off on it, regardless of whether or not you're in the city.
And I, I will tell you, I started in nineteen ninety-six whining at the county commission about these issues, so they've heard it ad nauseam over the years. I mean, and their staff has been more stable than the commissioners, but it's not gonna be a surprise.
Do you think having a rest, asking for the resolution is our next meeting to review? Mr. Gruff, rough idea?
Uh, I think-
Okay, good.
He's gonna have a big staff for it, right?
Now, remember, we're gonna have this hearing, and I, I would be very surprised if the hearing doesn't go at least two hours, because I think everybody from Rivermead, and a lot of people from four K, and probably your neighborhood area are gonna be at that meeting. That meeting could go three or four hours, so it may not be feasible to consider addressing it. Do you agree that everybody from Rivermead-
It, it is, it is a good possibility to potentially anticipate.
We're gonna have people-
It's possible, right.
Do we have anything that we could, temporary chairs that we could put up out in the lobby area?
All of our chairs are-
Oh, we don't have any portable-
We have seating out there, and some chairs here and there, but it's not gonna-
Okay. Well, I just thought maybe we could-
It depends on how many chairs.
Holding chairs.
Well, we, we, we had about a hundred people here.
Yeah.
Okay, separate from the resolution, then, did I hear you say that you would look for a way to fund and see whether or not we can do something more quickly with temporary fencing?
We're always chasing dollars, but yeah, it's a prior, it's one of our goals to get something fixed. We've been chasing dollars for that project for years. Problem is, is that the amount of money that it's gonna take to do even a temporary fix on that, and the amount of money that we can get from the grant is a huge gap. It's like, it takes a million dollars to do the project, and all we can really do is about fifty thousand dollars.
You can build a fence for fifty thousand bucks.
Yeah.
You saw the kid, you saw the kids on the edge.
Yeah, yeah, so it's just, it's really challenging for us to get the kind of money for a project that-
You know, I'm thinking of the temporary fence as construction stuff with posts and strung around it right away, you know, like-
Like a filled fence.
Yeah, and we could, we could get a group together and just drive them in and just-
Well, hey, come on down to City Hall and apply for a building permit.
That wouldn't last.
Particularly kids will not be in any attendance.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, Bale.
Hey, Bale.
Hey, Bale.
All right, does anyone have anything else? I do, Doc.
I think we're done. It's, uh, eight o'clock, I'm sure that he would, would be amiss that we get out of here now, so we are adjourned.
All right. Thank you all, commissioners, so.